They're like this.
I mean, they're using it, but I think you're gonna be before the before the.
Isn't participatory.
It is.
There's nothing more than people participating. I mean, it's it's just. I mean, that's all serious.
You have to take care. You run the computer, right?
I don't really.
Well, I'll I'll run it, but if you could bother.
That's what I'm sorry.
I talked to you.
Thank you.
I just. Something happened on your. Oh, I don't have to. And then.
Yes.
Hello, red sound. Hello, red sound.
Morning.
That's here.
What about first name?
Was that Kelly?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And David Schmidt.
Got it.
So can you place this one on?
Morning, everyone. We ask you to please rise or go to the prayer and pledge allegiance. Dear heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this time of year. We ask you to bless our Jewish friends as they are celebrating the season of Hanukkah. Protect the nation of Israel and help us always to be their ally. Lord, we are thankful to celebrate Blast Intermediate Unit Seventeen for their fifty years of service in our county. These professionals help transform lives through educational services. Their core values are integrity, respect, communication, and safety. These values resonate with their staff throughout the four county region that they serve. Bless these students as they learn and the staff as they serve our school schools and communities. Lord, we know you are the God of peace and comfort, and we pray for the victims and families in Waukesha who were tragically attacked by pure evil at their Christmas parade in their community. Provide comfort to those families that lost their loved ones. We pray that you will heal and restore each victim, and we pray for healing for their entire community. Father, we ask you to lead our nation through these turbulent times. May we see your power and light through the darkness, make us stronger and newer. Now, we pray that you will lead us through this meeting and provide us your wisdom as we make decisions to lean and strengthen our county. These things we humbly pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting at this time.
Um, right now, I'm gonna address some additions to the agenda that were not previously posted online within the twenty-four hour period. So the first addition is Step ELRC number seven, present the report on the state of early learning in Leicoming County and mapping project by step in Early Learning Resource Center, Region Seven. That'll be our operations one point seven. Accept twenty-five thousand dollar payment from Indigo Sports. That'll be an action item six point two. Vote to approve letter of intent to your chance aluminum corp. Action item eight point eight. And then vote to approve amendment to consent order in agreement with Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. Steve Sims will cover that at eight point one one.
Thank you, Director. We'll ask for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Fair say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Point of order. Do we need to move to amend the agenda? I thought for some reason in the new law, we had to do that. If the solicitor.
The changes of ours have been included and posted.
Okay, so there's no need for.
So the answer, Commissioner, is you need to approve to add the items to the agenda, which I think has occurred. You then will vote on these as action items, and then the revised agenda has to be posted within twenty-four hours of your being approved.
Okay, so we don't actually need a motion to add them?
Uh.
We, I mean, do we need a vote on the motion to add them is what I'm asking.
You would have to be a vote on the motion to add.
Okay, I'll move to add the agenda items. Read by the Director of Administration.
I'll second.
Fair say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so period. Thank you. And at this time, we'll ask for public comment on agenda items only. Morning.
Good morning.
State your name.
John.
Please take it to the podium, please.
Who do I get to say? John Shirem in Jersey Shore. I would like to ask the Commissioners' indulgence for a few minutes to make some comments about the county budget. I have not been able to be here because of serious medical problems with my wife. Please hold on here a moment. Okay, first of all, I think the people of the county should know how much money was paid to the county for the purchase of the lands over across fifteen from County Landfill for the two industries over there. Is that figure available? I think that should be made public. Total purchase price?
You mean what we paid to purchase?
No, what?
But the.
The county sold it.
We sold it for. I think we sold it for twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
Twenty five acres to.
Yeah, they may have they may have bought additional twenty five.
Could you have an exact figure later on?
Yeah.
Put up for us. Okay, it has been stated the county expects to sell this building this next coming year. Okay, first of all, has it been decided how you're going to sell it? Because there are three ways of doing it. Through a realtor agent, by sealed bid, or by auction. Has that been decided? It has not been decided. Okay, and the other thing, what is the assessed value of this building? That is public record.
That's a good question. If I recall, I remember seeing a figure I thought was north of two million. Brook, right, is here. I'm not, I should not. We can get that for you.
Okay.
Did you say assessed, or did you say appraisal?
I I meant appraised.
Oh, you meant appraisal.
Yeah, okay.
Well, appraisal is no longer any good. We'll have to do another appraisal on the building before we sell it.
What was the old appraisal?
Two point five.
They were.
Eight point five, okay. Third thing, the county wants to spend a million and a half dollars, quote, on a health center for public employees and their their family members. What is this health center going to do? I I will put it this way. Has there been a a cost analysis done as to how much money is actually going to save the county or the taxpayers of the county?
John, I think, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
I think we've definitely done cost appraisals in this sense. We are a self-funded health plan, which is different than most of the health plans that people are used to. Most people, most employers, and most entities pay an organization and say, okay, for this year, we're going to insure you, and the cost is ten million dollars. When you're self-insured, you pay every claim. We don't, we don't have an arrangement with Blue Cross Blue Shield where they are going to cover our people. We pay every claim. So we have a built-in incentive to make sure that the employees are healthy. On top of this, the reason why this health center is so critical is that our employees tend to stay for a long time. If I have high turnover in a business, I'm, it's not that I'm not, I don't care about my employees' health, but they're gonna be gone the next year. I'm interested in getting the least expensive policy. When you have people who stay twenty, twenty-five years, if we can find a health condition in year two, then the claim is not gonna be really, really high in year eight. And like most claims nationally, we have about twenty percent of our employees who consume about eighty percent of the cost of healthcare, primarily because conditions, if you don't get, for example, a colonoscopy at age fifty-five, and at age sixty, it turns into cancer, the cost of that procedure.
To quote you.
Yeah.
In from the paper.
Right.
When this was announced, okay, you made the quote that you you will hope it saves the county.
Well.
Okay?
Yeah.
That that is the exact quote, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
But it seems that public employees, no matter what, and I don't care whether it's for school districts or anything else, seem to get a lot more perks than what else. My wife and I, for fifteen years, we paid for our own health insurance. I bought my own gym. I I make sure I take care of myself. And but also get paid insurance. The third thing is with this work. There was development mentioned about the plans for further development along Route Fifteen next to the golf course or in front of the golf course. What are the plans for that? There's nothing been really announced about that.
Regarding the golf course itself?
Well, no, what development are you going to plan? What's development's going to be?
These aren't on the agenda.
Yeah.
So I mean, I mean, we, you know, we got a lot of people here.
Sorry, I took your time a lot.
No, 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 John, John.
I know, I know.
We're trying to.
You can do it in the public comment at the end.
I don't have the time to wait. I've got a wife who's dying cancer right now.
I know, John, you I you have a very difficult personal situation on, and we appreciate that you came today. Look, can we do this? Can we have a call after this meeting?
Not today. I I.
You gotta go to.
I gotta go.
I understand.
But we'll answer every one of your questions. Okay.
And it's not that we don't want you to ask them, it's that.
I just asked for a special. I've not done this, but.
No, no, I know.
I can't wait. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, John. I hope things I hope things go so.
Not they aren't.
I know. Okay.
Any additional public comments on agenda items only at this time? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on.
Okay, one point six proclamation, Blast Intermediate Unit Seventeen, fifty years of service.
So proclamation, Blast IU Seventeen. Whereas Blast Intermediate Unit Seventeen was established in nineteen seventy-one as an educational service agency by the Pennsylvania General Assembly. And whereas Blast Intermediate Unit Seventeen serves nineteen public schools, two career centers, and twelve non-public schools across Bradford, Leicoming, Sullivan, and Tioga Counties. And whereas Blast Intermediate Unit Seventeen transforms lives and communities through educational services with an everyday mission to provide, create, and facilitate high-quality educational solutions. And whereas Blast Intermediate Unit Seventeen employs over three hundred staff and is organized into four major divisions, student services, technology, educational planning, and management services. And whereas Blast Intermediate Unit Seventeen through the Division of Student Services provides classrooms and inter- interim services to over three thousand school-age and early intervention students with identified disabilities annually. And whereas Blast Intermediate Unit Seventeen through the Divisions of Technology and Management Services support districts' every growing need for access with technology and fiscal responsibility, respectively. And whereas Blast Intermediate Unit Seventeen through the Division of Educational Planning focuses on supporting schools and educational partners in the areas of professional development, curriculum development, and designing services to meet our schools' changing needs. Now, therefore, the Commissioners of Leicoming County hereby proclaim November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, as Blast Intermediate Unit Seventeen Day in recognition of fifty years of service to Leicoming County, and encourages the community to join with them in recognizing the impact and transformative value Blast Intermediate Unit Seventeen has had on those in this county. In witness whereof, we set our hand in seal this November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, Leicoming County Commissioner Scott Almetzker, Chairman Tony Armisar, Vice Chairman Richard Maravito, Secretary. Mr. Chairman, we have some representatives here from Blast Seventeen.
Like them, come forward.
Good morning, and thank you, Commissioners, for that proclamation. What a great way to turn the big five oh. I'm gonna have to remember that for my day when I am at the big five oh. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. So it was Theodore Roosevelt who once said, "Far and away, the best prize that life has to offer is the chance to work hard at work worth doing." That's what we do with our team at Blast Intermediate Unit every day, is work worth doing. For the last fifty years, we were started as intermediate units back in nineteen seventy-one. Blast IU Seventeen is one of twenty-nine intermediate units across the state. When we were developed, it was an act of the General Assembly, so we are built into statute. And the role of intermediate units across the Commonwealth is to support educational services of our school districts and non-public schools across the state. So here at Blast Intermediate Unit Seventeen, we continue that legacy of educational services that was started back in nineteen seventy-one. Our mission is still the same, to provide educational services. We work exclusively with school entities and school partners. We provide a number of services, mostly special education services, everything from life skills, emotional support, audiology, supporting the blind and visually impaired, deaf and hearing impaired, multiple disabilities. We operate two partial hospitalization programs, and I could go on and on and on about the work we do that is worth doing. Joining me today, we have just a small snapshot of our over three hundred staff. We have our Board President. We are governed by nineteen Board of Directors from all of our school districts, so we have our Board President, Lori Behr. We have our Director of Educational Planning and Assistant Executive Director, Dr. Brooke Bider. We have our Assistant Director of Student Services, Dan Karan. Our speech therapist, as well as Assistive Technology Consultant, as well as our Association President, Dana Vermilia. Our Personnel Specialist, Cheryl Starr. Our Business Manager, Sarah McNatt. And at the end, we have Jeff Pelley, who is a consultant supporting students who are transitioning from secondary school into after-school. So job coaching and working with families in a number of ways. So our team continues to respond to districts' needs. Where we see ourselves in the next fifty years is working with all of the partners to create an ecosystem of services. I think this last two years has shown everyone the changing needs of schools and families and communities. So we look forward to continuing building partnerships with our Commissioners, with all of our agencies across the four counties. And in celebration of our big five oh, we have a challenge that we would like to invite all of you to assist us in our challenge, and it is our fifty, our campaign of fifty, to give away fifty adaptive bikes and voice devices. We have some flyers that Dr. Bider has. So we are looking for families that have children with disabilities, and we work with those families to determine if they are eligible to receive at no cost an adaptive bike that is specially designed and fitted for the child, and it will also grow with the child throughout their throughout their life. And that is of no cost to the families. We also have my voice devices for children who cannot communicate. This is a like an iPad, and it is touchscreen, so they can communicate via iPad with their families. And we also have adaptive strollers that go all the way up to adult size to make the movement and mobility easier for families. So if you know of any families, the income threshold is very high, please just give a raise when we leave here, and Brooke will get you a flyer. So our goal is to be able to give away fifty of those bikes and devices. And again, no cost. There is no strings attached, so please help us find those fifty families, and we can't wait to celebrate our big five oh with them. Thank you very, very much. We appreciate your time, and thank you, all of you, for supporting our services.
You know, you forgot to introduce yourself. Tell us who you are.
Thank you. I'm Christina Steinbacher-Reed. I'm the Executive Director at Blast. I joined Blast in two thousand eleven after returning back to the area. I've been Executive Director since two thousand seventeen, and every day, I just, I love coming to work and working with this team, and our students in our districts is amazing. Thank you. I, you know, forgot about that that piece.
You know, it's so important that you came today, because I think that if you ask someone on the street, do they know what Blast IU Seventeen is? They're not gonna know, and this is sort of the situation we face with a lot of services for folks with diversibility. And also, just for our kids, the educational support that you give. So we really appreciate that you all came out today. We know there's some folks in the audience who came in support of you also, and we just wanna wish you luck, you luck in the future, and we will look for those fifty people, fifty families.
Thank you so much for what you do. Please extend to your staff how valuable they are. We appreciate. We're blessed to have you in our community. We truly are. And the bike idea, I mean, the place, that's what an awesome idea. You see those kids on those bikes, you'll be adored. You really will.
It's amazing. Thank you.
Yeah, please. We do a photo. We'll get there.
I'll stand next to this.
No problem. That's why I'm here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, a year ago, we organized a Diversibility Committee with the county, and we have Blast on our committee. Brooks, Dr. Bider's there, and she attends each each month. Anyone's welcome to attend. It's the third third Wednesday each month. If you reach out to us, we're usually scheduled noon, but we're gonna change the time so that everybody can plug it into the schedule. So if you reach out to us after the meeting, if you'd like to attend, we'd love to have you. We talk about housing, transportation, education, healthcare for the diversibility community, so we'd love to have anyone who'd like to be there. Dr. Bider, thank you for being on that committee, and thank you again for being here this morning.
Next item, one point seven, Step ELRC number seven, present the report on the state of early learning in Leicoming County and mapping project.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a a long time coming, and I know we were a late addition. We've been kind of on and off for many months, so I'm really happy to be here today. We have a couple different things that we'd like to share with you. The first thing is the mapping project, which we were able to do. And with your help of the Leicoming County Planning Commission, Amy actually helped bring our vision into reality. But before I get started on that, I do want to introduce my team here. We have the Early Learning Resource Center team, Melissa Kirchner, Jen Sweet, and Teresa Fryerson, so they are on my team here. And Melissa is going to chime in, you know, after I I do a piece of this. So the map, do you want to just get that right up there? Perfect. So this interactive map that we are working on for the Early Learning Resource Center, and to give everyone a little bit of background, the Early Learning Resource Center is a state-funded entity that provides childcare assistance to individuals who are working, and also support for childcare providers. And as you can imagine, over the last twenty-plus month, the Early Learning Resource Center has been an extremely vital piece of our community, keeping the childcare and early learning providers together through the ongoing pandemic, and really trying to get folks back to work and having childcare not be not be the barrier. Unfortunately, in Leicoming County, it is a barrier. And so one of the things that we saw kind of early on is that a resource for families to understand what early learning providers are out there and what other kind of support services are out there. So if we want to get right in, so this is on our step website, and this has all the providers in the three county area, Leicoming, Clinton, and Tioga, that the Early Learning Resource Center provides services to. You can look at the menu that Amy is is kind of touching. You can look at childcare, early learning, child development, all the services that are on there. And if we click further in, if we want to get to just.
Do you want me to zoom in?
Yeah, just zoom into one, yep. And this is actually phone-eligible. This is, you know, you can do it on your laptop, an iPad, a phone, and so this is zooming into the actual location.
And so this is zooming into the actual location. So this is Blessed Beginnings Preschool and Childcare. And it has all the information a parent would need to be able to contact that childcare and, or that early learning facility to figure out what they need to be able to, to get their child enrolled. Takes them directly to their website. We have their phone numbers, all those kind of pieces. But not only do we have the childcare and the early learning facilities, we have all the support services. So I think the emergency assistance, right there. So this is all the emergency assistance providers in Lycoming County. And so it's very easy, as you can see, to toggle and see where you need based on support services. And so this is the Police Department here in, in South Williamsport, and has all the information there. This is a living and breathing kind of app, you could say. And so we will, you know, be changing, and, and, you know, as information gets updated or new providers come online, this will be updated every, we talked about like bi-yearly, so like twice a year, all this information will be updated. And so this is really kind of a proactive tool. So I think, is that clothing?
Yep.
Yep, so this is the places where individuals can get clothing assistance. And so as you can see, just a couple of samplings of all the different places. So Antioch Baptist Church, and has all the information and, and all the services that they provide. As you know, some providers do multiple services, and so they are under kind of multiple titles, and individuals can get fully served through each of those, which we think is really important. So this is a really kind of visual resource for our families in Lycoming County, which is really exciting. So this is kind of the one-fold of our presentation today. It's the mapping project that is now online, and really wanted to kind of showcase this to the community and to the Commissioners, which is really, really awesome. You know, this is a long time coming and a really great resource for Lycoming County. I feel like we're ahead of the curve across the state in getting this information out there to parents, because this is definitely a need. Beyond the piece of like the information providing and ensuring everyone knows what kind of services are needed, we are facing some major challenges right now in childcare and early learning. And Melissa's going to go into some of that. And as she's passing them out, you know, we have a couple of different things in this packet for you. So the first thing is kind of information about the early childhood education and the general information, which is on your right-hand side. And then behind that is actually kind of our summary of today. And so you can kind of see and follow along, or you're welcome to get that information after. We provided some feedback from providers, because the Early Learning Resource Center is a link to childcare providers across the county. Unfortunately, this is not a good time for them to all be here, but we asked them to provide feedback, so that is right behind there. We have information about workers' qualifications and the Keystone Stars Program. So that provides information about, you know, kind of what childcare facilities and Early Learning Resource Center, early learning facilities are dealing with. Information from the state on opening a childcare facility, so you can see how challenging that is, as well as startup costs. On the left-hand side, you're going to see actual direct kind of research and information talking about the childcare crisis in Pennsylvania and nationwide, and what that means for families, what that means for getting people back to work, and what that means for businesses, tax base, and all those kind of things. And so all that information is on the left-hand side. So with that, I'm going to roll it over to Melissa. We are going to be brief. We're going to be talking about the kind of continued and expanded support for professional development, and the key reasons why.
Hi, everyone. Oh, this is also Michelle Johnson. She works for the Pennsylvania Key in our region. So if you go to the State of Early Learning in Lycoming County, there is some information we received from providers more than the quotes that I provided. We have had director's support meetings throughout the pandemic because of their crisis and allowing them to have input. We also have had high attendance for kickoff meetings higher than normal, because the crisis is putting a strain, and they're looking for some relief from that strain. And while they have got a lot of federal funding, they have gotten several rounds of federal funding, what they can spend that on is very restrictive. They've purchased personal protection equipment. We purchased some for them. And they, their renovations, minor. Can't, can't build a whole building with the money, bills, mortgages, because their enrollments are down and they're struggling fiscally. So it's more, they are to sustain them through the pandemic. And in Lycoming County, we are in a moderate childcare desert. So the problem existed before COVID and will exist after COVID. So we're trying to come up with creative ways to help, you know, sustain, since the federal monies have to be spent. What we're doing right now is an ARPA grant, and the providers who have applied and are eligible get six monthly payments rather than a giant chunk like some of the other grants. So they have nine months after their grant is accepted to spend all that money and report to the state what they spent on. So it's not something they can put in the bank and use it for later. It also won't, one of the things everybody looks at are the wages. And they can't really use the money on wages, because it's not sustainable after the COVID money stop. Many of our providers, however, are giving their staff bonuses in order to give them some kind of reward for having stuck to it through this crisis. So just to give you background on the federal dollars, because most people are concerned that we're putting all this money out there, but yet we still need money. So I wanted to put that out there, let you know what they're spending that money on. During the pandemic, things have really been a burden. And also, in some of the funding resources, when we went from Childcare Works to an ELRC. So one of the things we have difficulty providing for the childcare services is training. When they redid the configuration into an ELRC, we were given very little money to provide training. And providers cannot afford the sheer amount of training they have to pay for. They, every new employee has a 10-hour training for a new employee, and they're required to do six credits of six hours of health and safety. Then following that, every employee has to do 12 hours of professional develop in early care. So when you have to provide that for every single employee, it gets very costly. Right now, what we've been paying for is, we've been doing a couple virtual small conferences and paying for health and safety training. However, the state's going to start doing that, which is good, because we're going to create up a little money. But it is not enough for that, what we're providing. The, the benefit of providing PD is that that helps with the quality improvement. And they have to have, like, in order to move up the Stars level, which is a quality initiative. Each level, they start at a one, next just licensing. And then they could move up through the four Stars, and each step requires more training. Degreed workers. So as they move up, they need to have more professional development. We would love to work on having more local programs for associates, bachelors, so they can get those education levels in order to move up the Stars. When they move up the Stars, they get add-ons to the rates that we pay, so that is something they can put into the childcare to continue to try to increase quality. The pandemic has put like a monkey wrench in some of that, because with the open job market, a lot of qualified staff have left for higher-paying jobs. A lot of staff left during COVID, because they were trying to figure out how to provide care for their kids during a pandemic, which is, if a school closes, a parent needs to be there. So a lot of second-parent incomes went away, thus reducing our tax base. So it's been very hard for them to replace those employees and pay for professional development. We, they're, they can't compete with other employees, because their wages, what did we say, the average wage in Lycoming County is $10.51 for a preschool, an hour for a preschool staff. And the federal guidelines for a living wage in Williamsport is, well, in Lycoming County, is $31.96. And childcare per week for a preschooler is $1.52 per week. And infants are way higher. They can go up to 200 a week. So most of our parents are certainly not making most $31. That's a really good wage for Lycoming County. So that's not even a middle-class wage. It's higher. So affording that cost is incredibly high for them. So people leave the job that they're making $10 at right now, and they're seeking better employment. The people working in childcare can't afford childcare. As a side note with that, Penn College stopped offering the early care program, degree program. And the reason that they put out publicly that they closed is that it's the only, was the only program at Penn College that, when people graduated, they could not earn a living wage. So that's huge.
And so that has like a triple, like a triple-dotted effect. We have a staff shortage in childcare and early learning. We don't now have a facility that's graduating individuals who are degreed in this. And so childcare providers are really at, you know, half-capacity, most of them, you know, which is making a huge, a huge crisis.
Yes. We don't, they don't have the staffing. What happens when you don't have staffing or qualified staffing is, you can't take as many children, because there are very strict guidelines as far as ratios. For an infant, you can only have four infants per one staff. So as you lose staff, you're closing rooms, thus decreasing capacity for childcare. The other, the impacts with COVID are, we only had two providers in Lycoming County close permanently, which is great. And that was 61 slots that we lost. And, but the rest of the daycares that are still providing care, their capacities are lower than they typically are. And it gets really iffy for the citizens in Lycoming County, because if a child has COVID, they have to follow the COVID guidelines, which means all the children in that classroom may have to isolate, the teachers have to isolate. So there's another closure of a room. If the school closes, that causes, I mean, we haven't had that as much this year, but we're dealing with COVID absences on a regular basis. And the state will pay for up to 15 days of a COVID absence, but after that, they become absences for their parents, and they can only have 40 absences a year. And with COVID, that's really difficult. So financially, I mean, we, in our director meetings, I've had directors crying, you know. And there's only, I mean, we're trying to provide as much support as we absolutely can with what we have. We are one of the smallest ELRCs in Pennsylvania. I have three mostly rural counties. So we're certainly not on top of the money chain, you know. They, they do it, you know, they divide it by the amount of daycare sense, you know, parents, so we're a little lower. Am I missing anything? Okay. So we, the, the main focus that we're having right now with providers is providing the professional development and trying to work out how we can help them through capacity issues, because that's, you know, one of their biggest problems. It's very, we don't have a lot of daycares in Lycoming County. Like I said, we're in a moderate desert. This has decimated our childcare industry. And if you decimate a childcare industry, it affects employment, it affects the early education. Our children need to become productive members of society. It just keeps going. Now, I'm going to let Michelle kind of sum up.
Yep. So as you can hear from Melissa, basically, we wanted to give you a flavor of what is happening in Lycoming County as it relates to early care and education and childcare providers. One of the things that we would love is for the Commissioners to consider partnering with the Early Learning Resource Center to provide some of these recommendations that were on page three of your State of Childcare and Early Learning in Lycoming County, which include different types of trainings for individuals to get them their credits so that they can provide childcare. And then the capacity pieces, which looks kind of at the long-term strategy of increasing slots in Lycoming County. And it's not just as easy as the current providers increasing capacity, because a lot of times you have to look at square footage and the number of square feet per child. And so they can't just add people to rooms. They have to, you know, look at actual facilities and those kind of pieces. And so, you know, we leave you with the hope and the recommendations, and we really hope that the Commissioners would consider working and partnering with us on kind of a global level to provide some of these needed recommendations for the long term. So over a multi-year period, we feel that this would be a great investment for both the future of Lycoming County and then the families that are currently here. So we really tried to, you know, be as brief as possible, but to give you all the important nuggets. And so we're happy to take any questions.
And one of the biggest complaints that I have, and I'm sure there's, there's a number of them, is our parents that COVID-related, they, they can't send them to daycare, and yet they still have to pay. And, and it happens repetitively. So that is a challenge.
It is.
Especially for the parents, where they're still paying the bill, but they're still having to take care of or miss work.
Yep.
Which is, which is a strain. I think we all have to get our heads around the issue and decide how we're going to combat that. That is something that needs to be addressed, because the variants are coming out.
And if you really think about it, that makes perfect sense, right? Because the childcare providers all have fixed costs.
Yes.
You know, and so they need to survive in this environment, where, you know, they're, they're losing staff, they have some good staff, they're really trying to keep on, you know, but then even to get new staff in. And then when they have everybody out for COVID, you know, it is very, I have to do that for my kids, you know? And it's unfortunate, and I think everybody does. And it's kind of just the nature, unfortunately, about how childcare has been, been developed in this country. And so we need to figure out a better way, and I totally agree with you.
I think the Commissioners recognize that that's one of the biggest problems right now facing our entire workforce.
Yeah, we've talked to our own employees about.
Capacity.
The childcare, the cost of it. You know, and, and to pay someone $10.51 an hour to take care of your most prized possession, your child, is insane.
Yes.
That hourly rate has to go up. It has to.
Yep.
I mean, we'll, we'll spend $200 for a sports ticket, you know? And you think about the monies with cable TV, all the things we spend money on. And, you know, your child's the most important thing. And, and that person taking care of that child is forming that child's personality. And they're with him all day long. And, and an employee does not need the stress of worrying about their child whenever it works. They want him in good hands. And that hourly rate, and then you have to have a degree with it. I can see why Penn College has a program because of.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, you can't, you know, basically say you did the wrong thing, because they're right, right? You know, they're, they're trying to get graduates who make a living wage and who can sustain, you know, moving forward. And unfortunately, in this profession, you can't. But what it's causing is a crush with everybody else, who can't now find employees. And so that's one of the recommendations, is how can we find alternative educational providers, you know, and do some stuff in-house with the Commissioners to allow that, to allow us to, to get new folks here and get them trained.
So the $10.51 an hour translates to about $21,800 a year, which is 30% below the $31,000. which is 30% below the 31,000 federal guideline. So what do you think, it's a, it's basically the working force.
Yes.
I mean, they're working 40 hours a week and they're, and they're, obviously they have their own kids. But I just want to see if you, I want to make sure that we understand this. What you're telling us is that one of the paths out of this desert is to push money into training, which will then get more reimbursement rates from the state. Because the state recognizes and pays a higher rate for staff at homes or at early learning centers that have higher training.
They will get higher level grants because they will have higher level stars.
Right, so they'll move up in the stars. This is what's on point. So specifically, what are you recommending in terms of money that the commissioners should put into early learning for the next four years to get out of this?
So this is a commissioner's decision, you know, in terms of what we're looking at. But in terms of when we looked at what robust trainings and those things that we could provide, you know, we could, the amount of training that we can provide is solely based on the amount of funds that we have. Right now we have about 30 to 60,000 a year, which is 30,000?
30 for P.
So we have, so that's nothing, you know? And that can only do maybe one or two actual trainings. If we looked at kind of doing a series of trainings, you know, over the current year, take a year, do 12 months. If we had, and this is our internal thought and our internal wish, but between 200 and 250,000 per year, we'd be able to have a curriculum that we could do, you know, for those long-term educational pieces, those additional credits, getting the individuals. They're going to have to do online training if we don't have no college here, you know? And what are those things to do? Because a lot of individuals who are coming into this field typically don't have as much educational background. So we're really starting at a base level. And how do we get folks up? How are we allow them to, how do we allow the providers to have, you know, competent, you know, well-trained staff?
So, so the states devised a system basically where they want local skin in the game. They want local entities to invest in early learning. And the state says, we will reimburse your places higher with higher grants if you have better trained staff. So the 250,000 a year would basically allow the entities like STEP and ELRC and the others to offer their training. Cause otherwise you're saying to employees who make $21,000 a year, we want you to shell out $300 for a course. It's not realistic. It's just not going to happen. And so you're going to be on a treadmill of people not having training and wages not going up because the, the grants that the providers have are low. So what's interesting about this is that when someone is looking for a place to go, they are going to look at the schools and at the childcare and the early learning, right? Unless they're like 65 and plus, then they're going to look at where they don't pay taxes, right? But the reality is we need, our workforce, our population is declining. We're down 1.8% from the last census. We need population retention. So you're saying that a modest investment of 250,000 a year, either from American Rescue Plan or Act 13 or something, would start to put us on a path to being able to actually get out of the desert and move ahead with getting more people into, into this and better training.
It would fill a gap that we basically saw before COVID. And then COVID kind of like took it and smashed it. And now there's like this giant hole, you know?
How can we, how can we be assured the state's going to give that money to the entity? So the entity increases its hourly wages?
So that's a good question. Luckily the ELRC is the one who provides the grants. And so we actually track all the moving up of the stars. And we do not have very many four stars in like coming county. And so, you know, to be licensed, which is a cost to be licensed, you are at a one star. I would say the majority of individuals, providers in like coming county are at a one or two star.
And there's no fiscal benefit to a star.
Do you see a difference between a one and a two star and a four star as far as pay to their employees?
No.
Well then, then.
I mean, honestly, no. What it does is it gives them the money to invest in quality. It's not really to invest, it has very specific earmarks. The only thing that directly goes to the client, to the workers in a daycare is their, now we did a COVID round that gave $600 per employee, which was sad. On a non-COVID world, we have a ERA grant that also goes to the employees, but that is minimal. So none of that other money is, is earmarks specifically for range.
But what can it do is, so you're increasing the quality of the providers because they're able to get higher stars. The hope then is, is that the providers will be able to have enough funds to do expansions or anything like that, which is challenging. I think it comes back to the quality. It comes back to the fact that we really don't have a funnel at all right now for trained individuals to provide childcare. And so it's just, the hole is just going to get bigger if we don't patch it somehow in like coming county. And we do need to, you know, we need to bring this to your attention. You know, we are going to be also talking to the other two commissioner groups in Tioga and Clinton County because it's the same, it's the same story unfortunately, you know, within those two counties as well. We are, there's not enough providers, there's not enough staff, there's not enough slots. Parents are not working because they have nowhere to put their kids.
So there is though, just so you don't feel like there's, there's no effect at all. As centers, it's an economic model, right? As centers improve, there's going to be more competition to go to the higher centers.
Oh, people want to go to the four-star centers.
Like you said, Commissioner Metzger, they want to put their kids in a four-star center. So if the center says, listen, we have to pay a little more to our staff to get the people who are qualified and trained to qualify as four-star.
Cause they need a degree.
Because you need a degree. And so, so there is going to be some effect. I mean, the problem is that it's a, it's a market-based solution. And so, yeah, in a perfect world, we would just say, you know what? We're committing X amount of money to childcare.
I look at it as two, two, two problems. I look at it as you're not paying your workers enough. And I look at the parents can't afford them. We talk to employees that are giving half their paychecks to daycare and they might as well stay home.
Now some, some counties have, and we have not been successful at this, but they've actually been able to get businesses to do a grant for their employees. You know, that would run essentially through the ELRC. So, you know, based on per child, per amount of weeks or whatever, or per amount of months that they're coming. We have not had a chance, we have not been successful. Way back in the day, STEP actually did have that program and was able to do it. And we have the facility to do it through the ELRC because they're the ones who are paying the subsidies right now. But it's a tough, you know, it's a tough pill, right? For, for employers to be like, okay, in order to make sure this person is there 100% of the time, I need to invest also in the childcare, just along with healthcare. You know, it all kind of comes together because you have to look at that full person and that full family.
Yeah, this, this rose to the, to the top level of what we felt we need to be more progressive on to make like coming county more competitive. Or, or stand above, okay? Because it is a serious issue. And companies are looking for workers and their workers aren't coming because they can't afford the childcare. Okay, so we have to try to address that. And I'm not sure if there's regulatory issues that are involved in this because we've not delved that deep into the issue, but it is on our radar.
Yeah.
And, and we'll certainly.
Well, we are here to help support you. We are here to, you know, like I said, there's some recommendations in there, some small business loans potentially to individuals who want to start childcares. We have to also look at the family childcares because that's, you know, if you don't have a spot, you know, you're asking your grandma or your neighbor or somebody else who used to be working now to take care of your kids.
That's my other concern with all this is that in the past we have found if there are not enough daycare slots, children are put into situations that are not just educationally, you know, deficient. They're very unsafe situations. We've actually had parents keep their kids in a car outside of their work.
That's illegal.
Well, they do it.
I know, it's sad.
And they, you know, or they're somewhere that just is not made, you know, conducive.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, you know what? There are a couple of other folks here who came, I think, just quickly to speak on this issue if they want to. I see them in the audience. Nina, will you?
We, uh.
Yeah, so you, can we take care of it? Go for it.
We have, uh, we will be in touch with you again because we have a long meeting here today. But it's, at the same time, we, we have developed a strategy of our ARPA monies where we have reached out to our, our elected officials, boroughs and towns, you know, townships. And met with them, and we met with our water and sewer people. Next week we're meeting with our, our infrastructure, with our housing, the old and the new. Then we're going to meet with the agricultural folks throughout the, throughout the county. And then lastly, we want to meet with the early childhood people again. So we'll be sending you an invitation. We'll be glad to speak to you in length that day. We'll probably schedule for an hour and a half that day. Have you all come that day and talk to us. We have these monies that are one-time, I don't want to say a gift because our great kids are going to be paying them back. But we got to spend it wisely and it has to go against infrastructure, things that are going to last. And our children are our future and they're going to last. So we will be in touch with you to have that dialogue.
Thank you for allowing us to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. It's really, you put a lot of work into this and we're going to read this. And it's an incredible bit of information for us to understand what's going on. And honestly, today is really for the public. Today is for the public to say, listen, we need to sit up and look at this just like we need to fix bridges as infrastructure. Our children and our workforce development is, is infrastructure. So thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Look for that meeting sometime, probably sometime later.
And as always, you provide a tremendous asset to our.
Well, we did all the work for you, so now.
Read your pamphlet.
Amy, that's a nice job.
Yeah, Amy, thank you very much.
For working step. What a great asset for our community.
Yeah.
Hi, can I speak to something? Honestly, hi. My name is Nina White. I am a member of early childhood learning and we meet all the time with STEP. And I am children's librarian at the public library. And the one thing that I just feel, as I'm so grateful we're going to have an hour and a half to all meet and discuss, two things that always pop to me that is a mythbuster for everyone that doesn't realize that the reason why early childcare is also early education. It's not just having a babysitter. It's childcare equals early education. And I'm going to ask, Mr. Mayor Bead, I'm going to ask you to stay quiet because I've grilled you on this before. So I'm going to ask, do either one of you commissioners know at what percentage is a child's brain developed by age two?
My guess is, because I think I was sitting in a. It's, it's as high as 70%.
Yes. And what is the percentage by age five?
I think almost too late, no. They say six is that cutoff where.
Yeah. Yes, and I applaud both of you for knowing that. Because sometimes I think, and for our community members who maybe don't know the reason why, yes, we want the workforce coming to our county and yes, we all want to put our children in care that they can thrive and grow. One of the things I think that not everyone understands is that 70% of a child's brain is developed by age two, 90% by age five, 26% of our children enter kindergarten not ready to learn. So all that we do for early childcare and education together as a community lays the foundation for children's future success. And I'm really glad that we'll have a chance to talk more about that later. But sometimes I think that just helps frame, frame it forward as to this is the foundation.
So answer me this question because you hear it in reports all the time. What are we doing wrong? We spend more dollars in education, and I'm not saying early learning. Okay, but we spend more dollars in education from that K to 12 than any country in the world. And our rankings is far 18th. And I think it went down, it went above 20th now. What are we doing wrong?
You just answered the question. You just answered the question. We invest in K to, we invest in K to 12. We need to invest in.
She said it's not ready at age, in kindergarten or first grade. It's because those five or six years, we kind of like wasted them.
But, but think about when we grew up. You're different, but my mother was different, right? Okay, we, we had no childcare, my mother's.
When he says I'm different, what he means is that my mother was a working mother. She was working full-time. It was a single-parent family, right?
I should have.
Right, now that's okay. It got a chuckle.
You also need to know that the curriculum and expectations for children going into kindergarten right now are not what they were, please forgive me, when you went to kindergarten. They're, they're, they're higher.
But it's still developed, we still had a, our ranking was still much higher back then.
Yes, but kindergarten readiness skills have raised. It's not, it, well, it's, it's just a matter of, I think what you, you answered it in your head is we are investing in K to 12. We need to systemically look at more. There are more places that either have quality early learning, whether it's public preschool or more investment in early childhood, quality early childhood, early childhood care from birth to five. That's where we're missing. That's, there are studies of other countries who are doing, in other states other than Pennsylvania, who have higher quality early learning. And so knowing that it's on your radar, that we're going to have more time to talk about it. And I just applaud that both of you knew your numbers of brain development because if more people knew that, that's the research that tells you where we need to invest at brain development, early childhood brain development.
And you know, the other thing is that there's been more research on the brain in the last 20 years than even when, when we were kids. You know, in terms of what trauma, you know, we never even got into all that. Trauma with kids, I mean, you know that from all the folks you dealt with up at adult probation. So, but thank you, it's, it's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to meeting with you all again.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Item 1.8. Continuing along with our county department's constitutional studies. We'll thank you for your, uh, next up, we'll hear the like coming county treasurer, Cindy Newcomer.
Good morning, Cindy. So just, just real quick, this is something that we've been doing with the county is, so the public knows where their tax dollars go. They have each department give a brief outline about what they do. A lot of the residents in our county don't know what each county does. And this kind of educates them and provides a little bit of feedback to them to help them better understand what each department does. So thank you, Cindy, go ahead.
You're welcome. So today I'm going to highlight some of the services we offer to county residents and also the rules that we do internally to help with day-to-day operations. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Cindy Newcomer, your elected tax treasurer of like coming county. My office is located across the street in the third, um, third street plaza between Julie's Cafe and Voter Services. When most people think of the treasurer's office, they're thinking of doe licenses and dog tags. But we do a lot more than that over there. For instance, your hunters, you can get all of your hunting licenses right there at the office. We're also the only Pennsylvania game commission agent that can issue disabled hunting licenses. And we're also the only ones that can issue the replacement of those doe licenses if they're misplaced. We have sold close to 1,000 fishing and hunting licenses this year alone. And we get a dollar for each one of those licenses that we sell. We have sold over 14,000 doe licenses since July 14th. Just a quick note on those pink envelopes that everyone's familiar with for doe applications. If there's missing items or if they're missing a stamp or if they're missing seven cents, that they increase the rates, our office goes ahead and takes care of that. We even will put a stamp on the other hunters donate. Game commission says they should go into a dead letter file. We try to take care of all of our county residents that way. Launch permits, that's something new that we are now able to provide people. Anytime you want to use a Pennsylvania fish and boat launch for canoes or kayaks, you need to get one of those permits. The cost for one year is $13.97. For two years, it's $23.97. And we also earn a commission on those. Getting back to the dog licenses, we just sent out 4,000 reminders that the 2022 dog license is on sale now. So the applications that you get in the mail can be copied or you can go to www.liko.org and print out applications. Any dog that's three-month or older are required to have a license. In 2021, we have issued over 6,000 regular licenses and close to 1,000 lifetime resident, lifetime licenses. To date, the treasurer's office has hold over 14,000 lifetime licenses for those dogs. And a lifetime license is good for the life of that dog in the state of Pennsylvania. To obtain one, you need a transferable lifetime license. Your dog must be permanently identified like with a microchip and you have to have the vet fill out a form, then you bring it to my office. the vet fill out a form, then you bring it to my office. We can help reunite those lost dogs. If you find a dog, give us a call, we can look it up, tell you the current owner, and get you in contact with them. If you find one after hours, you can call the county's non-emergency number, they have access, they can look it up. You can call the 570-329-4060. As treasurer, I serve as part of the retirement board along with the commissioners and the controller. The county's retirement fund has been doing very well. The portfolio actually ranked in the first, fourth percentile in public fund accounts. Real estate taxes. In 2020, my office started collecting current-year real estate taxes. We did this with no additional staff, which results in savings to the taxpayer. My office handles the administrative duties, printing the bills, taking care of the interims. We work closely with assessment for tracking and maintaining the millage rates. We collect 33 different municipality taxes. So if you are one of those residents, you can pay directly at my office across the street. You can go online and pay through the website, or you can walk in at any Citizens of Northern Branch location. This represents roughly 28,000 bills. We also provide tax information and tax certifications for like abstract or closing companies that you may need. They send those in daily for us to process. We also process the county portion of the elected tax collector. So if your municipality has an elected tax collector, they bring the county portion to us, and we process that for the county. That represents roughly 24,000 bills. One thing that's important to understand is we currently collect taxes to December 31st. After that, they're considered delinquent, and we send all of those files up to the delinquent tax office, which is on the fifth floor of the same building that we're in. You might have heard of small games of chance, bingo, and special raffle permits. These licenses can be purchased on a monthly or yearly basis and can only be issued to tax-exempt nonprofit organizations to raise funds for the good of the community. These permits include small games of chance such as the 50/50, pool tabs, daily and weekly drawings, and raffles, which are listed in the Act 92 of the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue's Rules. And we issue roughly 150 of those yearly. If you own one of the 50 hotels or bed and breakfast locations, you pay hotel tax to my office. This tax was put in place by the commissioners in 1999. It is intended to benefit the Lycum County Visitors Bureau and promote tourism in Lycum County. This tax resulted in an average of $1 million a year for the last three years. One of the biggest responsibilities that we have is to ensure the 30 Lycum County bank accounts are reconciled on a daily and monthly basis to ensure that no fraud is taking place. We have numerous safeguards in place internally and with the bank. We have audits throughout the year from the controller's office and external audits, including like the auditor general for hunting and fishing licenses. We follow up and handle all outstanding checks with the county's general accounts. We verify and distribute and pay the paychecks, handling payroll deductions, including taxes as federal, state, and local. We oversee any wage attachments that may be required. We also get all the revenue coding sheets from the accounting, and we process those and put them in the county's accounting software, making deposits daily. We're responsible for all the online banking that's done. And we're also the last stop in the accounts payable process. So that means the checks and payrolls are verified and distributed by my office. So that makes me very proud to say that I have some of the very best staff in Lycum County. They have close to 40 years of experience, and they're always looking for ways to improve. I have two deputies and two clerks that always greet you with a smile or a warm hello when they answer the phone. They always go the extra mile to answer questions and provide information to the residents or other employees, as customer service is our number-one goal. I encourage everyone to call the office or stop in. My direct line is 327-2246. So you can find what I highlighted here, I tried to be quick, not to take so much time, but you can find what I highlighted here and more information at the www.lycum.org. If you go under elected officials, treasurer, you'll find the information there. So as I leave you, I just want you to remember that we are your one-stop shop for hunting, fishing, and dog licenses, launch permits, small games of chance, bingo licenses, and we can probably accept your current-year tax from many municipalities. You can either check what your bill says or go online, and you can see the list of municipalities. I look forward to continuing to serve as your elected treasurer and hope you have a happy, healthy holiday season. So thank you. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer if anyone has questions now.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate everything you do.
Yeah, doing this stuff, doing a very job. We appreciate it.
Moving on to 2.0, accounts payable cash requirement.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. I am seeking approval for this week's check run in the amount of $790,438. And then of that, 40% is county general expenses, 17% is grants and other sources, and then 43% is our mess. Is there any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
No, I have no question. Thank you very much.
Motion accepted.
I'll move to.
How's second?
On fifth side.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director, I could briefly jump. We're an hour and 15 minutes into our meeting. I'd like to jump ahead to the informational ideas and the dressmaster Hoffman's presentation. 6.1, then we'll come back to the salary board and TDA actions. 6.1, presentation of Book 1 award to Lycum County Registered Recorder's Office.
Well, good morning, everyone, and thank you for that consideration. Yes, it's great to be back again. As you may remember, two weeks ago, I was here and talked about the Registered Recorder Office. And so, back again, and the last time I was here, I ended with an item to demonstrate how we like to go the extra mile and provide that additional service in our department. I ended with that very heartwarming story about being able to sell a marriage license as a result of someone's dying wish and with that involved. So today, I continue with yet another example of how our office provides excellent service and goes above and beyond to help the public, this time by making it possible to access all the land records online. I'm happy to officially announce today that Lycum County, Pennsylvania, now has all deeds, land records available to view online from Book 1, in this case, 1795, when records started to be kept, up to present day. Up until now, you could go back about 65 or 66 years to 1954. But we thought we could do a little better than that and provide everything online. And you can imagine what the advantages are to that. Just think about it. I mean, you don't have to come into the office. You can do your research from the comfort of your home or wherever. You don't have to come in and go through some of those old books, which sometimes are not easy to read. It also has been, you know, when you think about COVID, it's a great mitigation effort as a result of the challenges we faced with COVID. This was a major project, as you can imagine. Not easy. I mean, this really puts us in an exclusive category among counties in Pennsylvania. And I think we can be very proud of the fact that a county our size has this capability, a Class 5 county. That is really a remarkable feat. And so it was a sacrifice. We, we had members of our staff, we have limited staff, who had to go above and beyond their regular day-to-day duties to coordinate all these efforts. And so I want to give them their recognition because, you know, without them, this, this couldn't be possible. Dorothy Washer, Ashley Harmon, Deb Petravito, Leslie Carnivale, Elliot Crossley, and Kimber Smith. Again, without their efforts, this would never be possible to do because they had to work, go, you know, they had to do this work on top of their day-to-day duties. And it's, again, not very easy to do. We want to thank the county director and also the county commissioners, who were really unanimous in their support of this project. And really, all the people that work for the county, all the people in Lycum County for their support with this. And now finally, we get to our partner for providing our software and technical expertise with this project, Avenue Insights. And I am pleased to say that we have several people here from Avenue Insights to celebrate this day. And, you know, they're the ones that really did the heavy lifting. They're the ones that put this team together, you know, behind the scenes to make all of this happen. And, you know, they're, when you have a project that's an extensive one like this that takes several months to complete, there's some bumps in the road. I mean, it, it really, you know, and, and I want to thank them for, you know, overcoming some of the obstacles and, and being able to make this all possible. I mean, there were times when, you know, and end those this, we, we had some documents that we, we couldn't replicate very well. We, I, I had to take those big books and, and load them in the county vehicle on more than one occasion and take them to a site where we could actually do a better job to make sure we had that great quality in the end for everyone's benefit. So I'd like to introduce our, our guests today. We have Susan Gilmore and Kirk Bride, Brendan Middleton, and Paul Colangelo from Avenue Insights. Thank you for, for coming today, and thank you for being our partner in this big project. Thank you for all you do. And I would, at this time, like to invite Mr. Paul Colangelo up to the podium, who is the CEO of Avenue Insights, to talk a little bit about Avenue and make the presentation. I see Ann is here too with a wonderful plaque.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Commissioners, county director, thank you for having us here this morning. Avenue's been in business for over 40 years, proudly serving more than 3,000 local customers all across the U.S. We are incredibly excited to, to present and provide Mr. Hoffman this plaque as a token of our appreciation and the excellence that he and his staff went through over the last six months to make this happen. We all live in very different times today, and to be able to have these artifacts preserved in a digital way only makes us as an organization and this, in the county, better prepared to serve its citizens of Lycum County. So with that, we are presenting to Mr. Hoffman, if you can come back up here, please, our Book 1 Club Award for Excellence. So with that, I'd love to give Mr. Hoffman and his staff a wonderful round of applause.
Back to 1795.
Back to 1795, yes.
Yeah, we're going to get some photos. You know, what's very interesting about what you've done, Mr. Hoffman, is that we talked about the problems of preserving some of these books physically, right? And we know that it's important to preserve them, but it's expensive. So the fewer people that handle them, the less damage is going to be done. And so that's a really important part of this.
Absolutely.
I'm sure you recognize that.
Yes, sir.
You know from doing that all over the country.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, please join us, and we can actually send you the photos. We can have our.
Should we come up front here, Ann, up front for, for the commissioners?
Yes, please.
Shot at least.
Yep. I don't think the sign's big enough. We have a little overachiever on the side, I'm just saying.
Now I want to make sure your name's a little larger.
Thank you, Commissioner. You appreciate it. I need to get one for the commissioners' office.
Oh, you can get one for the commissioners' office, okay.
One more.
Let's go back.
Let's go back. We can do it.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you for being secure.
Thank you so much. You enjoyed the meeting.
I want you, if you can, just for a minute, tell, tell the public how it benefits the public bringing into the digital.
Go to the mic because if being live, we're, we're.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's so much, many advantages.
Yeah, good point.
And they save on parking tickets.
Well, commissioners, thank you very much, and you're absolutely right. There, when you're preserving records that are several hundred years old, you do have to wonder about every time somebody handles them, touches them, residue. Unfortunately, when books are out, sometimes people don't want to wait in line. We've seen where they rip out pages, and then it's gone forever. So the work that Lycum County has done is just historic, that you are making sure your records from sovereignty in 1795 will be available for, you know, decades to come, centuries to come even, I guess, at this point. So it's very historic, and Avenue as a company really wants to support that because we know there's, you know, as we've heard today, there's conflict for funding. But again, once a record is gone, it's gone. And this is what is our, you know, count, our founding world is based on real estate. So if you lose that chain of title, it's not insignificant. So your support is there. And now, back to 1795, you can go online and see all your records. So Dave is absolute dream to work with, and his staff is very small, was very collaborative, and was there because we were calling them every day.
Was this the first time you had a contract with Lycum County?
No. Yeah, we've been doing work over the years. It is, yeah, it's not, it's hard to do in one swoop. So it's just ongoing commitment, going further back in time, and you don't, you don't want to start at Book 1 because you don't want to gap in your records. So you need to really start from day forward and then work all the way back to Book 1, which they have successfully done, all the way back to 1795. So we thank you for the opportunity to be your partner, and as always, look forward to be your continued partnership. We've been doing business with you for about 20 years. So thank you so much.
How does the public access it online? How do they go online to access?
You just go to Black Home and County. We can, you've got the link posted on the website, and, and they can search by document number, day, name.
P A dot U S land records dot com. And that's another thing. You know, in conjunction with this, we have, had another program for the public that was instituted almost two years ago, where you can, anybody can go online and view for free. I, it's, what a great service. We've had so many positive comments about that.
We've had so many positive comments about that. It used to be 50 cents a page just to view. But now, not only do we have all these records available online, you can go there and look at them for free. You know, it doesn't get any better than that.
Yeah, because often you might need to look through a few documents to find the right one because maybe you don't remember the exact date or you're trying to do research on your family's, you know, property. So it is a beautiful thing that you guys have done and made that available to your constituents for free. And then, and then they only pay if they want to print it. So it is, it's very nice for your constituents.
And we were blessed because we had a contract with South, I think it was Southwest Energy when we found out we owned land and we got royalty fees. We started this process and through Act 13. Act 13 was, you know, another benefit that our small rural communities that were impacted by gas and oil, we utilized those for the betterment of our community and, you know, you've been a great partner.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's always nice when you can get the CEO out, right? So to really, so how he supports it, just absolutely supports.
I've been to Williamsport a few times.
Yeah, so that's how important it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Back to PEA actions.
Yes. All right, 3.1, approved. PEA report.
Good morning, Commissioners. In Resource Management Services, we're asking for a reclassification of the Training and Safety Manager, pay grade 8.9, to a Chief Training and Risk Management Officer, pay grade 9.10, to be effective December 12, 2021. In Planning and Community Development, we're asking for a reclassification of the Administrative Support Supervisor, pay grade 7.8, to a Financial Administrative Supervisor, pay grade 8.9.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
You know, yeah, just really quick. This is Al Little positioning. And over the years, we, you know, a county needs to be able to show that we're taking things seriously as far as safety. And we brought Al in probably, Roxanne, maybe a year or a half or so ago.
Under two years, I guess.
And he's really stepped up to the plate. And RMS gave him the opportunity and now the county's going to utilize his expertise because of the job that he's done over there at RMS. And this will reduce costs for the county as well. He's doing a fantastic job and one that's well deserved.
He will lead the safety committee that the county does have, which does enable us to get a discount.
Yeah, there's no, and he's done a great job and there's no question that it's an organization with 532 full-time employees and many more part-time doing all sorts of things from the landfill to our prison, et cetera. He will have an eye on safety.
Yeah, instead of just being the safety director for the landfill, he'll be over the entire county, every department. Okay. All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. At this time, we'll recess the Commissioners' Public Meeting for the Salary Board, convene the Salary Board.
Commissioners, we're once again asking you at Resource Management Services to reclassify the Training and Safety Manager at a pay grade 8.9 to a Chief Training and Risk Management Officer, pay grade 9.10, effective December 12, 2021. And in Planning and Community Development, the reclassification of the Administrative Support Supervisor, pay grade 7.8, to the Financial Administrative Supervisor, pay grade 8.9.
Okay, I have a motion.
Come on in.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All fair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's carried 4-0. Thank you. This time, we'll adjourn the Salary Board and reconvene the Commissioners' Public Meeting.
Commissioners, in Resource Management Services, we're looking at Alan Little as the Chief Training and Risk Management Officer. This is a reclassification at a pay grade 10. There's a change on the rate and I, it was my error in the copying. The last number didn't come through. And this is effective December 12, 2021. At Resource Management Services, Casey Swank as a truck driver, full-time replacement, pay grade 6 at $18 an hour, effective December 6, 2021. In Facilities Management, Dennis Straub, Maintenance 3. This was one of the new positions and this is a promotion for Mr. Straub, pay grade 8, $23 an hour, effective December 12, 2021. In Facilities Management, David Allen, another one of the new positions. This is a promotion for David Allen as a Maintenance 3, pay grade 8, $23 an hour, effective December 12, 2021. At the Prison, Trenton Peasley, Maintenance 3. This is a rate change, pay grade 8, $23 an hour, effective December 12, 2021. Also at the Prison, Joshua Lichter as a Maintenance 3. This is a rate change, pay grade 8 at $23 an hour, effective December 12, 2021. In the Department of Public Safety, Persephone Harkins as a telecommunicator trainee, full-time replacement, pay grade 6, at $16.76 an hour, effective December 6, 2021. And in the Commissioners' Office, Julie Vogel as a Purchasing and Grant Officer. This was one of the new positions that was approved at a pay grade 8 at $38,933.97 annually, effective December 6, 2021.
And just to address that last one, the Purchasing and Grant Officer is a staff of two full-time and one part-time currently that handle about 150 different contracts throughout the county. We have $24 million, or I'm sorry, $22 million that we're going to be receiving in ARPA monies over the next two years. And we need to make sure that everything is documented and accounted for. This person will be assisting with those monies also. So we want to make sure that, that, that staff now is, has got a great deal on their plate. And we had to, we had to make sure we had another person in there to handle the extra responsibility of the ARPA monies going forward.
And the good news is also that we can use those ARPA funds to fund the position which helps us administer the ARPA. Also, that's the, that woman will work under the direction of Maya Tuns, who I believe is here.
Yes, yes.
And so it's also an important part of a, having someone who can, God forbid something happens to Maya, who can do what that office does.
Yeah, I mean, a perfect example. I was out of a full disclosure with COVID and it was an absolute nightmare. I was still working from home, dealing with my own sick kids, my own self being sick. But it's something you have to do to keep things moving. So, but that's a perfect example, you know, just being able to take, quite honestly, just sick days as needed.
Did I make, did I state you have a part-time employee too? Did I make?
I, yeah, she did.
Okay, I want to make sure because she's very valuable in your department.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely. I don't want to minimize anyone's job.
So you have two full-time, you included, and then a part-time person. And you're definitely, with the contracts and everything, it's, you're overloaded. And so this is definitely, it's similar to a deputy. And, you know, hopefully this person will step in and take some of that burden away, especially with the ARPA monies coming in. You know, we had the first round of monies that came through, the CARES monies, we had SEDACO assist us on that.
Right.
And now it's basically, we're taking the whole, whole thing on ourselves. And it's going to be quite an undertaking.
You know, Commissioners, even though we've had outside agencies assist us in the distribution and tracking and application processes for those funds, there's still a lot of the behind-the-scenes work that goes on between planning, purchasing, even our monies.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Hopefully we can also find other grants. Hopefully we'll find other grants too that are coming separate from the direct allocation done.
And although you can use the ARP funds for the positions, we are going to sustain this. You know, this is not something once and done because there's a tremendous amount of opportunities out there for our county to tap into those resources. And if we do not have the staff and knowledgeable staff, we'll never get these.
Yeah, my goal is to make this person pay for itself. Because my goal is just to dedicate this person to doing grants, which means researching and writing, so getting new opportunities, being prepared in what I call shovel-ready when new opportunities come out. So hopefully generate more grant revenue to the county and truly make it like the hub. And even liaise on between the state and federal agencies to, you know, do some lobbying for grant funds as well.
And it's not just the grants, it's the contracts too.
Oh, yeah, there's purchasing, I mean, purchasing.
So many contracts, it's unbelievable.
Yeah, there's just, there's a lot. And then, you know, you know, I'm so glad to help out during the time in the Commissioners' Office, but I'm doing double duty that too. It's something also, Chris, and so it's just a crazy time, you know. Commissioners' Office is a very busy office in general, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the first line.
Now, second.
All fair, say aye.
Aye.
So carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
Moving on to information items. This is a very positive action we're about to take here.
I think this is a first.
I believe so.
Yeah.
Chris, why don't you come on up? Chris is from Indigo Sports. Say, what was that?
Formerly, Indigo Golf Partners, formerly Billy Casper Golf, yes.
And so Commissioners, seeking your approval to accept $25,000 payment from Indigo Sports due to the golf course's success this year. And we anticipate or forecast similar success moving forward. Okay, Chris?
Correct, Chris Strand with Indigo Sports. Yeah, it's, we've been overseeing the golf course now for six years. Been a long road, but a lot of fun too. You know, adopted a course that obviously had its financial struggles. But it's exciting today to say that, you know, a golf course now for four years hasn't borrowed a dollar from the county. And now, you know, we're to the point where we're self-sustaining, we're continuing to do our necessary improvements and now give $25,000 back to the county all by, all out of our operational funds. So it's an exciting step, you know, on the long journey that we took over the last six years, but moving in the right direction for sure. So thank you for all your commitment. This is definitely a, you know, you guys went along this journey with us, made some financial improvements yourselves early, but that's helped us get to the success we're having now. So greatly appreciated, everything you're doing to help us along the way.
Chris, when you came in, how much was on the books that were still owed and you paid off through your work? Is it about $300,000?
Well, we took over a golf course that was losing a couple hundred thousand a year, had $300,000 in debt.
That's what, yeah.
Another couple hundred thousand in old AP, another couple hundred thousand in cash that was from memberships and things that we didn't get to adopt. So let's say we had a million-dollar hole just to get started six years ago. So, yeah, so it's now exciting to have money in the bank and be able to start giving back.
Great. And we want to thank all the members that have contributed to the golf course. The improvements are being done. We came, you came just a year ago and looked for new furniture for outside, which I think the whole furniture might have been from Mannerie Lodge in the Poconos from the 70s.
Sure.
And, and, and then we had golf carts that were falling apart and the clubs were falling off the carts and being damaged. And so we invested in those. You made your first payment on those golf carts in October, which was close to $50,000.
$53,000, just carry on.
So you made that payment and now you're returning money to the county in a form of a check here today. So we want to thank you for your success.
Thank you.
We wish you continued success and continue to work with each month.
Yeah, it's set up for good success going forward and we're in a good position. And as we talked about at the meetings, it's a lot more fun to talk about, hey, where can we go spend some things and do some things and give some money back than trying to get out of the hole that we were years ago. So it's great. I wish I would have followed Avenue's lead and had one of those big checks for you, but I don't have that. But we will have the check here too momentarily.
Well, you know, we also want to thank the taxpayers of the county because the taxpayers have been patient. It's been a hard road. There's been difficulties and you outlined some of them from lines of credit. You know, and we thank the people on the authority in the past who struggled with the difficulties of having those volunteers on the authority who didn't necessarily have the changes that had been made to the course and yet they still persevered in the current authority, rec authority that came in. But ultimately, at the end of the day, the taxpayers for having the faith, because it's always been a controversial issue on both sides. We have meetings where we have 60 people come out and say, keep the golf course. And we can probably find another 60 who say, get rid of the golf course. At the end of the day, it's got to be positive for our people who live and work here that there is a public course, they don't have to join a country club to be able to play golf. And it has to be an asset for people who look at our community as a place to live, especially in retirement, that we have a public asset. And also, hopefully, we can find a way to get more young kids into golf, whether they don't want to play football or Little League or whatever, but maybe they want to play golf. It's another avenue for us to open up for our kids to have a quality of life. But I do want to thank you. You've been, you know, we meet with them every month. I want to thank Commissioner Muster for his relentless work on the course. I mean, going down to the course, you know, three of us going down there, having a meal, paying for the meal, but having a meal and not being happy with the service and going and talking to them, right? From that kind of very micro level to us touring the course and trying to understand. But at the end of the day, I hope the public understands that we do it as an investment in this community for the future.
And we continue to explore and work on selling the land around the part of the course, not affecting the two courses, but we're in, we're getting closer with the federal government and the Avenue to go about being able to sell that land. And hopefully that'll occur next spring.
And I'll just add that, you know, you've done a great job because we told you, do not come back to the taxpayers. And it was tough. It was tough on the golfers, it was tough on, but you used your expertise to turn this all around. And I'm going to add that this has been going on for a very long time, since, you know, 2012 anyway, and prior, prior to that. And, you know, in 2015, when Commissioner Marabito and McKernan were elected, it could have easily went south, you know, if we didn't have the support from those two commissioners that don't play golf, right? And because it was a struggle and have faith that it could turn around, you know, it wouldn't have happened. So and the taxpayers spent a lot of money. It's not a small amount. It was $500,000 plus another bond payment of $300 something. Now, at least that's the land that the county owns and we can sell off eventually, hopefully, a part of that. So, Chris, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm sure you could give us more right now, but you got to be careful, be conservative.
We're going into winter, like we talked. So let's be conservative. You never know what winter brings because else we don't have revenue coming in at this stage when you got snow out there, right? So we'll reconvene in the spring and see how that goes and see where we can go from there. But I'm excited to kind of keep giving back now that you helped us with some initial funding and let's start giving back the other way.
And I think, you know, more importantly, not only the taxpayers, but the members and the people that play at White Deer Golf Course. They went through a lot as well.
Absolutely.
And we appreciate their memberships and them bringing in people to plan our beautiful golf courses.
Yeah, I mean, it's a complete asset to your point, Mr. Marabito, you know, for the county. I mean, it puts heads in beds when you have events and things like that, which you get tax dollars from hotels, right? How many charitable donations at the the golf course gives to local charities and things that helps all kinds of different things. So, I mean, it's definitely an asset on that side, too, that, you know, it's also helping the county from not only an activity, a recreational activity that they can participate in, but also there are things that are given back.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, and actually, Commissioner Messer, you mentioned a good point. You know, every board of commissioners basically stands on the shoulders of the commissioners that came before them. And the ones who had the bond that was floated to get the land, we couldn't be selling the land now if we didn't own the land. And a number of years back, there was a bond that was floated and the swap was made, and the county actually owned the land. So now we can sell it, as Commissioner Metzger said.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful news. Thank you.
Six point three. Acknowledge the county will be requesting bid for Williams Provisional relief well replacement project 2021 to 2022 budget item. My team, Shannon Ross.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
This is actually a rebid. If you recall, over a year ago, we went out to bid, and then we got prices back, and they were astronomically high. So as a result, we've gone back to our consultant that's working on the project, has redesigned some of the construction, worked on some of the environmental. So now we are going back out to bid, and hopefully that will generate better pricing.
The steel came in over a million dollars higher.
We were during a time where it was just a way it was given to market and COVID and everything else.
Thank you. Shannon, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Awesome.
Just maybe an update quick on the levy.
Sure. What we're hoping with this rebid, we ran into a number of environmental factors with the bid also, and there was concerns with some of the bidders that they, we wanted to clarify some of the items. So our consultant went back to DEP and clarified a bunch of items that this way, we hope that the bid will be able to be narrowed down a bit more. We may not be able to counteract the steel costs, but we can counteract some of the items that we thought were pushing the bid up higher than it should be. So with this, this is the R cap grant that we have. It'll cover a million dollars of the cost. It only covers the relief wells that have to be totally reconstructed. The county will be paying for the cost of the relief wells that have to be tested. And then if the relief well is tested and does not pass, then we can cover that cost under the million dollars of the R cap. So, but it's moving forward. This is one of the items that must be fixed for both South Williamsport and Williamsport Bird to become recertified.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Six point four. Acknowledge the Life Limited Resource Management Services will be requesting a rebate for landfill scale rebuild 2020 budget item. Steve Sebbs, you still on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Good morning, commissioners. I've had this request and rocks rebid for landfill scale rebuild project. Initial bits that we did approximately a month or so ago, not completely proper construction timeline. The construction timeline is critical to reduce the amount of downtime and minimize the time between the demolition and the existing scale and the re- for the rebuild. Basically, once they go in from the construct, the existing outbound scale, we are down scale until, until that scale, eleven months. That is going to cause a lot of, I guess, extra congestion over here at the landfill. We'd like to build that project to provide a better timeline to reduce the amount of downtime that we have over here on that scale and demo until it's replaced, so.
Okay, and this is a 2021 budget item.
This is a 2021 budget item, correct.
Thank you. At this time, we'll recess the commissioner's public meetings for the board of assessment revisions.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
The first item, seven point two, I'm seeking your approval for the following real estate refund, which is for Williamsport Family Associates in the amount of $6,351.15. This is due to the value change on the parcel due to a court order from a real estate appeal.
So the value dropped over a million dollars?
Yes, this was the old assessed value, two million, two twenty-four, eight hundred. The new assessed value is one million, two oh two, five hundred.
Where is that property located?
That is over on West Edmond Street. The apartment's along, I'm sorry, they run along Little League Bowl Road.
See, and here is another prime example. We're seeing it more and more and more. Why this county needs a reassessment? Because as that gets taken off the state rolls or the city tax, where are they going to come up with the money? Okay? They're going to raise taxes on everyone. They're going to raise the taxes. And when you're going back to the 2004 base, you know, rate, people that are building a million-dollar homes are going back to a 2004 base rate, which are getting a tremendous discount. That is why, you know, we're seeing this happening all the time. Correct, Brooke?
Um, yes, during the appeal period with the down big commercial properties, a lot of them.
Even with the mall now, that was reduced again. So it's something that unfortunately the state doesn't want. They're going to take action on it, but I think the county's going to have to do it.
Yeah, I agree with you, Commissioner. So, Brooke, if I understand this correctly, I just want to make sure I understand this. The new assessed value, is that basically based on the 2004 value, or 2006, I'm sorry?
The new assessed value is based on 2004 after using the common level ratio for the year 2020.
Right, so.
Which was sixty-five percent.
So they filed an appeal, and basically they were able to show that they were deserving of that 2004 value?
Yes, within appraisal that was committed.
Right. And we're going to lose, I mean, we're losing taxes also.
Yes.
Right. And so as Commissioner Messer said, that has to be made up by other people. And that's why the reassessment would basically distribute, from an equitable point of view, the taxes. So you're not going back to 2004.
No, you would be starting a new base year at 100% assessment.
Any further discussion? Motion accept?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
So carry.
Okay, I have seven point three. I'm asking you to approve the following real estate exaggerations that you should have the list in front of you. These are examples, there's the Fedex exemptions, a lot of the more mobile homes are raised, houses are raised, so they would get revised bill for the next billing cycle.
And you're recommending all these?
All these to be approved by you, yes.
Any, have a motion?
I'll move to approve the exemptions provided on the sheet by the assessment.
I will second that.
Need further discussion on these. Carry, none, can I, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. At this time, we'll adjourn the board of assessments revisions, and we'll reconvene the commissioner's public meetings this time.
All right, moving on to action items. Maya, you have eight point one through eight point six?
Yep. Let me just go. Okay. Eight point one, the first item is to vote to approve the grant monitoring grant with Susquehanna Health Foundation for the SANE program, which is the Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner Program. It's an amount of $18,200. And I think there are representatives here that they probably want to say a few words.
Yes, come on, please. If you'd like to say a few words. Thank you for being here today.
It's my pleasure. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you so much for having us today, and thank you for your consideration of this funding request. My name is Stephanie Steinbacher. I am a gift officer with Susquehanna Health Foundation. We are the philanthropic arm of UPMC in North Central Pennsylvania. We are a nonprofit organization, and our request today is for $19,200 to purchase a mobile ODT unit to help our sexual assault nurse examiners collect forensic evidence for the prosecutor's office to be able to prosecute on behalf of victims of sexual abuse. So that in totals $8,000 for our UPMC Williamsport location. In addition to that, we are requesting $10,000 to create a fund to have available to educate additional SANEs, nurse examiners. This is an ongoing issue. We have our nurses who have specialized training to be able to collect this evidence and work with these victims. They're required on it to have special training for this. It's $500 per nurse to receive this training. Right now, our nurses take call in addition to their hours of working in the emergency room. They take an additional 100 hours per schedule of on-call training that they would travel anywhere from Muncie to Lake Haven to Williamsport for that, for those incidences. They need to collect the evidence. So this additional funding to educate more nurses will allow us to cut down on that call time. Like so many other organizations, our staffing is incredibly stretched, as you can imagine, in the hospital. So this will assist us greatly in, for our nursing staff. And then on top of that, there is an annual service fee of $1,200 per mobile ODT unit. We're requesting that initial startup fee for, from you all as well. So a total request of $19,200. Any questions I can answer for you about the work that we do, or what this is for?
No, we just had the district attorney, Ryan Gardner, brought this to our attention, how important the need this was in the community, and we totally agree with him. And we are definitely in favor of it.
Wonderful.
So needed.
You know, we were, when we went and met with the district attorney, when you watch television, you see Law &amp; Order Sexual, you know, go get the rape kit, right? And that's basically what this does. And I was surprised to learn that we didn't have the capacity. And it's so important in prosecuting to make sure that those kinds of violent crimes don't happen again. So, yeah, I think we all were very impressed by both you, Ms. Steinbacher, and Ms. Morrison, in terms of the information you gave us and the education you helped us understand the importance of this.
This is a heinous crime that is one of the worst in society. And any way we can help prosecute one of these cases, to make sure that the person's held accountable, we'll definitely be on that side.
We so, so appreciate all of your consideration. I know, Commissioner, you're not able to join us for that meeting, but we so appreciate all of your time. And of course, Mr. McDermott, thank you so much as well for your help in getting all this in, Maya, who, she too. So thank you for your consideration. We so greatly appreciate it.
And then the next time, call our office and you have a light agenda.
Very good. I appreciate that. Thank you all.
We were in here last week, so kind of backed up.
No, understand completely.
And we breathe Commissioner Messer, so he's fully aware.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Any other questions I can answer for you?
No. Thank you both. You're great representatives of the foundation, and you do a great job presenting information.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you all.
Have a motion to accept?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, the next item I have is to vote to approve the intergovernmental agreement with River Valley Transit, a division of the city of Williamsport. This is something that the city comes to us usually on an annual basis to contribute funds to assist in their transit services. And this also benefits the county as we receive transit services out at our lifestyle view complex. It's a $100,000 commitment. At the end of this year, 2021, we'll issue $50,000. And then next year, by June, it will be another $50,000.
Maya, are we still able to fill up gas?
Yeah, so that's a part that we get.
So nothing's really changed in the contract?
No.
So it's not, it's not just to provide a service up to, you know, District Magistrate Whitman, including? We get a lot more benefits than just.
Yeah, and even this year, well, I worked, it was, it took a while just due to the administration and then some of the changes that occurred there. But, you know, we're piggybacking off assault. I was able to do that now for them. It made better sense for us to fill up locally than to go, you know, prison, to go the way over RMS to fill up. Obviously safer. So we finally were able to get that hammered down. So they are always very cooperative and, you know, willing to assist in our needs and, you know, and we do the same. So that's part of what we should be doing and working together, so.
Absolutely.
You know.
Provides, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Just it provides a regional service for the county.
Yeah, that's really critical. I think that one of the things, if you look at this document that they provided us, 40% of the pickups and the drop-offs happen outside the city of Williamsport, Hughesville, Muncie, all these areas. And honestly, I don't really know how, you know, River Valley Transit is a division of the, of the city. And really, in most other places, it's an independent authority, a transportation authority, whether it's a small town. And I think that it's something that we as a community need to look at in terms of whether or not that current arrangement puts an undue burden on the city. Because if we especially want to grow the areas outside the city, it's so important to have, have transportation, and also to get people to jobs. I think many of us who have cars sort of assume that everyone has a car, but that's not the case. So, yeah, I think it's a good, a good local match. I wanted to ask them, I tried to call over there to ask them, there's $447,514 required in local funding under this agreement with the state and the federal government. I'm trying to figure out where the other 347,000 is coming from. We're putting up $100,000. I had trouble getting, connecting to River Valley. I think it might be their phone system. But in any event, I know that if you look on that second to last page, you can see the local share. But I know that there'll be, there'll be others giving, so. Do you want a motion?
Yep.
I'll move to approve the $100,000.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
The next item I have for you is to vote to approve the fiscal year 2021 State Homeland Security Grant Program Agreement. This is known as the North Central Task Force Agreement. It's through, has 10 different other counties that are associated with this particular funding. It includes Potter, Northumberland, Sullivan, Tioga Union, Bradford, Clinton, Columbia, and of course, La Cumbera and Montour. And the amount that Pima is allocating is $511,515. And this is a three-year grant. This is actually a renewal grant that we get every three years, which became effective on September 1st, 2021.
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Then the next item I have is vote to approve Resolution 202114. It's to update the county-appointed solicitors and assistant solicitors with the two new additions that they have at McCormick. They're asking to add them as the solicitors at a rate of the $100 per hour, which would be effective November 8.
Okay, and see, no stranger to us, Mark Levacchio, he's one of the solicitors, as he's joined McCormick Law Firm, and Mike McCormick. And so looking forward to working with those two individuals. Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
The next item I have is to vote to approve gas credit cards for June Alprobation Office, Prison, and the Coroner's Office. This is to further assist, we have backup cards in the purchasing office to allow for, if the city pumps are down, for local travel to fill up. If those city pumps are down, then what would have to happen is that we would have to do a reimbursement process through either the employee itself to fill up the fuel, or I'd have to do a cash advance. Obviously, that's not really, in my personal opinion, an effective or a very efficient way to do business. So this will allow for these departments who do a lot of travel to have their own gas credit card, and to also seek benefit in the cost savings, too. Because with this, it's more efficient, but it's tax-exempt credit card, and there's also a 6% discount that they receive at the pumps, too. Currently, APO has had these cards and the sheriff for many years. But with the changes that are occurring in some of these departments and more travel that's needed, it makes better sense to add these additional cards.
So have we been paying the tax when we, when we, we have, when we reinforce people?
No. Most of the time, what's happening is that they're filling up here at the city pumps. Most of the time, what's happening is that they're filling up here at the city pumps.
Okay.
But what has happened?
Get on the road and...
Right. You need to get gas, then we're paying it.
Yeah.
We're paying the state tax, which we, we don't have to pay it.
Right.
Wow, that's great.
The employee pays it, and then you go to...
They get reimbursed.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's a great savings because that's, I think we're the second highest gas tax...
Yeah, we are.
Yeah.
Yeah, as you can see, J P O is one of them.
Yeah.
And so obviously, we've had to go out of state now for services.
Right.
So this just helps them in that delivering the services.
Yeah.
Yep.
Coroner travels quite a bit back and forth downtown.
Right.
Other areas.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side. Aye. So carry.
The next item I have for you is to vote to approve agreement with Air Management Technologies. This is a 2021-22 budgeted item. This is to install the new H VAC system for Third Street Plaza.
Can this is a budgeted item for 2021-22?
Yes, and it's just an amendment. We had to include additional work as they began that project. So you'll see on Exhibit A the additional work that's required and, of course, the total price as a result is ancillary services.
Okay. A motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
All fair side. Aye. So carry.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Moving on, eight point seven. Commissioner seeking your approval to reappoint and appoint the following individuals to Cameron Coons, reappointment, term beginning zero one zero one, two thousand twenty-two, ending twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Thomas Murphy, new appointment, term beginning zero one zero one, twenty twenty-two, ending twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. And reappointment of Commissioner Mayor Beato, term beginning zero one zero one, twenty twenty-two, ending twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two.
I don't know about that third one, but we'll consider it.
I'll have to be a supplement here.
I just want to thank Mr. Coons and, and for his years of service and looking forward to having Mr. Murphy join the Conservation District and Mr. Mayor Beato for his service. And thank you all.
Thank you. And Mr. Coons represents the former community. I mean, he obviously represents more than that, but Mr. Murphy is a member of the public and brings a lot of experience also.
They meet every, every month.
Every month.
Yeah.
Long meetings. Two hours. Without fail. Seven to nine, and they, and they...
They have steak dinners?
No.
We're starting to join that class of long meetings last month here, so. Which we have to correct here. But anyway, going forward, motion.
I'll move to approve.
Can I vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. There's no conflict. But there's, no, I, I...
I'll second it. And I'll second. All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Eight point eight. Vote to approve the letter of intent to Chancellor Lumen of Corporation for the property in Timber Run Industrial Park.
Okay, can I, have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Well, we're just excited. We have a letter of intent from an individual that may have some interest in further purchase of land over there and just from a company that's...
He has, yep, he has purchased property and has opened in Williamsport, former J and W aluminum. And we're excited about him being in the area. He's an outstanding company and a fastly growing company. And he's restored that business back to, to what it once was and continues to look for ways to expand. And he's looking forward to working with us over, hopefully in this area and bring, bring further jobs. Have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
Thank you. Eight point nine. Vote to reject all bids received for the landfill scam rebuild. Steve says, you might as well take the next four items.
Get the next, good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm asking for the question approval to reject the bid received for landfill rebuild. As we mentioned earlier, the original building, the timeline for construction led to unfavorable conditions for a large area of operations. So we would like to, to reject these bids. And as mentioned earlier, along the top, additional bids would affect the construction timeline.
Okay, have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side. Aye. So carry.
Eight point ten. You can go through them, Steve, on your end.
I don't have the actual agenda. I will keep this for the professional service stream. Is that current?
Through the Greenland Sunberry Motor.
Yep, yep, yep. I'm asking for the approval for professional service stream with Sunberry Motors. Current contract was originally signed in 2017 and expires the end of the year this year. Their contract will replace that contract and will be for a three-year term to provide maintenance and repairs on an active basis for the landfill's heavy equipment machinery. Over that, over the last five years, so Larry has not had any price increases to the contract that was signed in, in 2017. So we appreciate that and would request approval and their sort of agreement to continue their repairs and maintenance process.
Great, thank you. Have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side. Aye. So carry.
Eight point one one. Vote to approve rental agreement with Cleveland Brothers, 2021 budgeted item.
Yes, I'm asking for the approval of rental agreement with Cleveland Brothers, which is for an air compressor and a dryer unit. The air compressor and dryer that he used to, of the, the gas well, sort of a great project that we've been working on. We installed additional gas wells over the past summer and in the fall here. We have also added to construction projects to cleanly jeline and feed the, the gas lines out to make it more efficient and better. The air compressor and dryer will help water some of the older wells, build a water and increase things efficiently as they could. I'm asking for work with our, with some of the parts that we have in our inventory and try and keep up with it. They just don't seem to be working the way they should. They're not, they're not powerful enough or, that we can't keep up with the pace. So this, we believe with this, this compressor and dryer will, will help obtain that and be able to dry the water in the existing well if you have water.
Okay, have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side. Aye. So carry.
Eight point one two. Vote to approve amendment to the consent order in agreement with Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. This is a 2021-2022 budgeted item. Steve, do you have any details or do you want me to add to it?
Yeah, this is basically just the consent order agreement with the P I's extension. We dreamed of it designed a little over a year ago. Basically, this agreement extends the timeline to remedy the, the repairs and fixes that need to be done for the J tag and gives us a year to, to, to finish that project, a year extension to finish that project.
So it just adds a year to the current CO.
Yeah, yes, correct.
Have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
So carry. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
You know, I...
Poor Nancy.
I did want to add one thing, you know, D V T worked very closely with us and were good partners in that process. So, you know, a good collaborative effort with Pat Brennan and the user.
Well, we thank them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take it away.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Juvenile probation is asking for your approval for the renewal of our Summit School, which is Academy Schools. One of their divisions is a Summit School, doing business as Summit Academy. You will see we had significant increases. And I do believe, I don't have it on here, I locked them in for two years with these increases. So we're good till 2023.
Do we have anybody in the one box of P I?
No. Typically, we put one in the other one that I'm going to be presenting after.
That's adolescent for impatient drug and alcohol residential.
Yes.
Have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side. Aye. So carry on that one.
The next one, I typically look at eight point one four.
Yes.
Is a renewal for Families United Incorporated. This is at Muncie. It's a division of Ashlar Manor. And this is particularly for our, for foster care for us, to get families, our local families to do foster care. They are just minimal increases.
And minor increases.
Yeah.
We have children down there?
We do not have anybody in there right now.
Okay. So we do use that?
We have used that, yes. Last, well, this last 2020, 2021, 2020 to 2021, we used them, yes.
Have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side. Aye. So carry.
And the last number is eight point one five, the Academy Schools. This is another division of theirs, which is Community Specialists. This is renewal of Allegheny County, and I locked them in for two years also. Their increase is why not as, as substantial as the Summit Academy, thank goodness, because this is the one we use of the two of them.
Yeah, Pittsburgh area.
Yeah. And we did have, we have one, one girl in there right now.
Okay. Have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side. Aye. So carry. Thank you, Commissioners.
Have a good afternoon.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you for locking those rates in for multiple years too.
That's the best I could do, unfortunately.
Better than nothing, that's for sure.
Yeah, true.
Eight point one six. Vote to approve agreement with Contrast Communications.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Asking your approval to just renew our contract with Contrast Communications, excuse me. They take care of all our in-house phone systems whenever we have some issues, upgrades. And actually, it's the phone systems for all Leckemun County, District Justices, prison, R M S, Department of Public Safety, and ourselves.
A lot of phones.
We got them at a no increase this year, which was good, because last year they went in a crazy amount until we went back and, and got that lowered. So there's a no increase for next year.
Okay.
And it's just time and material.
On needed basis.
On needed, yeah.
We appreciate them working with us and the increase going forward, so have a motion to accept.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side. Aye. So carry. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
All right, Commissioners, eight point one seven. Vote to approve 2021 County Liquid Fuels Incumbents for Waterdale Road in Armstrong Township. This is a liquid fuels budgeted item. Mark.
Morning, Mark. Good afternoon, Mark. At least it's not good evening. I'm feeling very full, very full-time right now, so. Yeah, we, as you know, have been working with the municipalities on fixing their bridges. And in Armstrong Township, they have a real critical situation up there with their infrastructure that not only serves the Williamsport Water Authority area, but many residents up the Mosquito Valley, Waterdale Road area. The infrastructure that's involved here in the improvements consisted of a bridge replacement, a water line replacement, and a, a road embankment failure that was happening. Now, the good news is, out of those three items, two of them have basically been fixed now. The county partnering with the Water Authority and the township got the, the water line relocation work done. And by the way, that water line was in a very vulnerable spot that if the embankment next to it failed, it could sever the water line and cut off all the service for water for Williamsport area. So this was a very critical thing for us to basically work on and get finished. So that water line's done, yeah.
That was for roughly fifty thousand residents, right?
Yes, yeah, when you look at the service area. So that, that's a must thing that you had to get done, and that got done. Then the township worked on reinforcing their wall system that was in danger of collapse where Waterdale Road sits on top of it. And the only thing they could do was basically restore the wall, because to relocate the road, you'd have to go into a cemetery, and that is federally basically restricted, that you'd have to show there's no other alternative other than to go into cemetery, which you don't, won't even think about. So they, they did the, a soil netting project to reinforce the wall. So that's now done. The bridge is the last thing that needs replaced. It's a structurally deficient bridge. The township had gotten some, some grant funds towards that. However, the wall got much more expensive than they thought originally, and they had to divert the grant money they got from the bridge over to the wall. That's all been now approved by the state. I got a call from Todd Peicher, the engineer, the other day on it. So they're good on that. Unfortunately, they just don't have enough money to replace the bridge, which is an estimate right now of about six hundred thousand dollars. Okay? We originally looked at putting that bridge in our bridge bundling program. But at the time we looked at it, it was a complicated situation, and we thought also that they could move faster than they ended up moving. So that bridge never got in our bundling program. But now, the circumstances are different. And if we don't do something to help out, they're never going to be able to replace the bridge anytime soon. And the other part about it is that when you look at that situation, we are, as you know, in our bridge bundling, done with the first bundle. And we were wildly successful basically with that bundle. You know, we finished the four bridges, just cut the ribbon the other day on it. We ended up with four hundred thousand dollars in bid savings, which is incredible on a one-point-three-million-dollar overall estimate for, for the first bundle. So we have bid savings there. We're about to go to bid on bundles two and three. Now, they will be separate contracts, but they will be basically let within a month of each other. So I'm thinking by the end of January, we should have actual firm bid prices on bundles two and three. And I'm hoping we can even get some additional bid savings from that. So the bottom line here is that it may be possible now to add an eighteenth bridge to our bundle. And where we would put it is in bundle four, because bundle four is consisting of a variety of different kinds of structures that are not all like the bundles one through three, where we only did aluminum boxes in bundle one, and concrete boxes in two, and G R S in three. There's a, there's a, a variety of those. This would fit well in that one, because it's about a fifty-foot structure with steel and all that. And that should not hold everything else up in bundle four. Now, the township's already designed the bridge. Okay? It's basically, they got the designs done, the permittings through the Army Corne, all that, and D E P are being finalized now. So when we're ready to do bundle four, which has probably been about a year, that thing's all ready to go. They basically turned their plans over to us. We have very little shipping and handling on our end for engineering, and they can go ahead and let that contract. Now, what we're doing here is, we're giving ourselves some flexibility and meeting a state requirement at the same time. The flexibility part is, um, if we don't get the bid savings that we are hoping through bundles two and three, um, we could look at using some of our liquid fuels money to s- to sort of shore that thing up. But if we get the bid savings, we may not need liquid fuels in the long term for this. So there, it's sort of a placeholder here. The second reason why we want to encumber liquid fuels money for this project is the state requirement ensures that your unencumbered liquid fuels balance year to year cannot exceed your prior's allocation plus interest. So right now, we're getting too close to that, and when we encumber a project, now we won't have that problem by the end of the year. From an accounting standpoint, we're, we're good as far as the state perspective. Uh, but like I say, we can de-encumber it if we finally get bid savings on the other jobs, and then we just put this to a different use. Uh, so it serves a lot of masters, this action, but believe me, that's a good strategic move to build the most bridges we can and save the most money at the same time. So, um, I'm very excited about it. Like I said, when I look back at over history, this is probably one of the best county programs that have been ever offered since seventeen ninety-five. Uh, I would certainly put it in the Hall of Fame. You know, it's, it's a tight hop kind of project for us, and, um, I'm, I'm very proud of our planning staff, actually, uh, for taking the bull by the horns and really, really, uh, delivering these, this, uh, result.
Make sure you're digital, digitalized.
Digitized, yeah.
Digitized, yes.
Mr. Murawski, is it correct that if we, um, run into the problem with the state where they see that we've not encumbered all the money, that we are at risk of possibly having some of that money yanked back?
Well, yeah, it's something called forced distribution.
Right.
And then there's a formula that said that you have to give out so much money and all that stuff, so.
So, so it's, it's actually much smarter for us to use it in this way to help this obviously incredibly important bridge.
Yeah.
As they all are.
That's why I said it's a strategic move.
Yeah. And it's good to have you handling this.
Yep, for sure.
Digitized or undigitized.
Okay. Okay, motion.
I'll move to approve.
A second.
A second. Who's he got?
All fair side.
Aye.
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 Eight point one eight.
Thank you, Mark.
Uh, vote to approve commission letter for Appalachian, Appalachian Regional Commission, or grant application associated with Timber Run Local Access Road, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budgeted item, ten.
Okay, commissioners, uh, what we're doing today is, um, C D C O C Council of Governments, uh, works with the Appalachian Regional Ca- Commission to, uh, apply for road funding, um, that support economic development. What we have here is for the second phase, which you've talked about, you have a letter of, of interest from Chance Aluminum, this would be for the second phase of the access road to the back part of the parcel. Um, they have, C D C O C has invited us to apply for a grant. They've actually invited Brady Township, because we're not eligible to apply. So they invited Brady Township, who has approved the grant application, to apply for a million dollars in funding towards that second phase access portion. Um, and of course, they need a letter of commitment for the remaining. Our cost estimate right now is about a million, five ninety-six, nine fifty-four. Um, so what this letter of commitment does is it secures the second part of the funding for that five hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty cents. So basically, we'd be paying a third, about a third of the, about a third of the cost of, of the back port parcel. We are still looking for funding for the, uh, front parcel, which we're out for bid on for the access, for the digger and for the, um, the second property that we still don't have a buyer on yet. But what this does is it will give us some funding for the second part. It'll also, this is actually, if this is awarded, this is handled by the Penn Dot. We will have to pay for the, the final construction, not the construction, the final, um, engineering of the, the second, the back parcel, but this will also be handled through the E C M S system at Penn Dot, so we won't have to do all the bidding and all that kind of stuff. They will be handling that part of the project. So there will be some costs, uh, with the engineering and design, um, but this will basically, uh, give us a million-dollar grant for the back parcel. Once it's constructed, it'll all be owned by Brady Township. So we won't have any, um, we won't have any cost for the maintenance of the access road, uh, once it's turned over to Brady Township, and they will be handling all the snowplowing, all that kind of stuff. So. Any questions?
Motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
You know, I think this is, this is an important part, and it's something that the commissioners have supported. I mean, this is not chump change. Okay, we're, we're putting a tremendous amount of money in here, but it, it's going to prove to be in the long run, the better of Lickemun County, uh, with, with the economic development, the other opportunity, uh, with chance. And, um, this is how we have to turn our numbers around. Uh, we, we have to start to build up those businesses, bring in more people and, and build the homes necessary for.
Comprehensive plan identified as growth toward.
So, you know.
I, I do want to thank Jason Fink at the Chamber for the work he's done on bringing people to the industrial park, because that, those, it's like bringing tenants to a property. Bringing those people there has enabled us to have the reason to do, to do this, which, and of course, the people themselves coming, we, you know, we have to thank them, Digger and the others, for investing in the community.
The opportunity to drive down past, it's, it's, uh, especially coming into Lickemun County, uh, you come over the hill and, and you see that construction going on, it's exciting, and it's definitely changed the facade of that area over there.
Yeah.
I, uh, I, when I came back last week from C C A P, I came that way, and it was, it was exciting to see.
Put property back on the tax rolls.
Yeah.
Because right now, uh, well, Digger bought their property and everything, and they are getting a preferential tax assessment, but they are paying a tax, you know? And once the other parcel is sold, and once the back parcel is sold, we will have property back on the tax rolls. Um, even at a reduced tax assessment for a period of years, that still brings a huge amount of tax dollars back to the county, back to the township, and also the earned income tax from the people that work there, so, and the jobs.
Absolutely. Make a motion accept. All right. I did.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. All fair side.
Aye.
So carry, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Eight point one nine. Vote to approve land use license agreement at Little Pine State Park, Kelly Robbins.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, this is a renewal of land use agreement between the county and the Commonwealth D C N R for use of their gatehouse at Little Pine, uh, dam for, for our agents that's there for our automated street gauge system in the county. Uh, this renewal will be for ten years, and will be good through December thirty-first of twenty thirty-one.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Kelly. The motion accepts.
Second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
And last but not least, eight point two oh to eight point two three, Jared Kenny.
Have a drum roll.
Morning, commissioners. I'm, I'm feeling lonely today.
You're feeling what?
I'm feeling lonely. There's no one here.
The room is empty. What do you mean, where are you?
Give her a sidekick over here, she's still here.
Uh, first up, um, software maintenance renewal for our firewall systems across the county. Uh, this is for fifty-eight, five twenty-five. It is a budgeted item for twenty twenty-one and does save us sixteen-five over that three-year period.
Okay, motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Fair side.
Aye.
Aye. Next?
Next up is a supplemental staffing agreement with Malillo Consulting. Uh, this will give us eighteen days of consulting, uh, three days a month for six months at a cost of fifty thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars.
Is this on an as-needed basis? Or is it a retainer?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna be using it.
It's three days per month for a period of six months. And as of the eighteen days. Okay, motion.
I'll move. I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
Uh, next up, we're going to take a step in the direction of getting an inventory of our data. This, uh, three-year subscription agreement for thirty-six thousand, eight hundred, ten dollars, sixty-three cents, uh, will allow us to search our, uh, data across the county and get an inventory of where, uh, sensitive information is kept, so that in the event of a breach, we know where it was and what could have been, um, compromised. Um, if we don't know this information, we have to assume everything is compromised.
This became, uh, critically aware to us when we had the challenge.
Yes.
With nine-one-one, uh, communications going down, and we had jump operations over to the alternate nine-one-one center.
Have a motion.
I'm moving.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? Can you hear me now? Fair side.
Aye.
Last but not least, uh, one-year renewal of our antivirus and security software for our servers and desktops, uh, thirteen thousand, one hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents. It is a twenty twenty-one budgeted item.
Take a motion. Something.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
I think our, uh, we may want to continue the stretch.
It's amazing how much we spend on, uh.
Computers.
Computers and information services. Unbelievable.
Firewalls, protection. And Jerry.
Technology is expensive.
And Jerry.
Any commissioners comments?
Only one, real quick.
Go ahead.
Uh, you know, uh, we received some correspondence, uh, from Ann Baker over at, uh, the Boys Town, okay? She's the, uh, borough manager over there, and, uh, you know, she's doing a, she's doing a really good job. And, um, like so many other people in municipalities that, you know, do work, uh, she has taken this job very seriously, and, uh, I think they're very lucky to have her there.
Agree. I bet communication with her, she is very dedicated to her job and lots, and asks lots of questions, and, and she wants to learn and, and do the best for her constituents over there. Does she have any, okay, have any public comment on there?
Uh, I do.
So we don't have any audience unless our deputy back there has a comment. He's the last one. We emptied the room. See what we do?
So from, uh, Thomas Adams, I was thinking about Act Seventy-seven and how it was not legally, constitutionally passed, and is actually another proclamation under color of law. I believe the county should ignore Act Seventy-seven and conduct more, duh, duh, duh. Upcoming elections, including primaries, under the constitutionally recognized election law, not Act Seventy-seven. We must stand against the destruction of our republic by being an example to other, uh, continuing counties to other counties by staying true to the rule of law according to the P A and U S constitutions. I have more ideas as how to keep the unconstitutional overreach of state and federal officials, including the judiciary. Thank you. Tom Adams, Williamsburg, Indiana.
Tom Adams, I'm going to agree with you more. And in, in, in reality, when you start to take a look at some of the, the ordinances and laws that are created in these big cities, such as New York City right now, are going to put on eight, they want eight hundred thousand illegal people to be able to vote in their, their local elections. And, and they said that they will not vote in this, in the state and federal elections. Yeah, I almost believe that. This is an outrage. I cannot believe people are allowing this to happen. And they're not, there's many municipalities that took action and are allowing illegals to vote.
The requirement was thirty-day residency.
Thirty-day residency. And, and if you don't think that's going to spill over into your state and federal elections, you're mistaken, because of exactly what he's saying, there, there, there's no integrity anywhere when, when you're, you start to allow this.
Okay, thank you for.
Solicitor, you still on?
I'm with Mr. Adams. Thank you for your comment. Solicitor still there?
Do we want to, uh, break now and, and maybe go into the back room and talk to the solicitor?
Yeah, let's do it now.
What do you want to do later?
Um, don't take a brief, brief minute, let's do it now.
You got a couple minutes still?
Okay. Beings adjourned, um, we will meet again on Tuesday.
I'll, I'll, I'll call you back from the conference.
Tuesday, December seventh, here at ten a.m.
Okay.